Good afternoon, I'm Councilwoman Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. Also joining the committee members of this committee are Councilwoman Bullock from the 9th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen from the 1st District.
Aye, sir.
And Councilman Cohen will be leaving for 5:00, at 5:30 to 10:00, another pre-scheduled hearing. Councilman Glover from the 13th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice President Milton, Middleton from the 6th District. Council Vice President. We'll come back to her. Councilwoman Porter, who is a member of this committee, will be joining the hearing. Okay, thank you.
I was having mute difficulties.
Okay, so Councilwoman Porter will be joining the hearing later. Currently, she has attended a press conference that is scheduled to address the horrific shooting of Baltimore Police Officer that occurred in the district. We're keeping the officer in our prayers, a human being whose job is to serve and protect our city shot by someone with brazen mentality. So if she don't get back, we know why. Councilman Torrance from the 7th District has a excused absence. Also, we have also the sponsor of this bill is Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also from City Council President's Office, Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Also for the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themlus, and also Ms. Sophia, Sophia. I don't know how to say your last name. I don't want to chop it up, so could you just say your whole name for us? Thank you.
Sophia Gabriewitt.
Thank you very much. I wouldn't have got that right, just so you know.
That's okay.
Also, the great staff person for this committee is Marguerite. I'm asking all speakers and panelists to meet yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak, and after you finish speaking, please meet yourself again until you are asked to speak again. We are meeting today to discuss Council Resolution 21-56R in a formal hearing from front door to the school door for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Transportation, Department of Health, Baltimore City Public Schools, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and the Office of Equity and Civil Rights to discuss our children's commute to school. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, who is the primary sponsor of the resolution, will give opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I really appreciate everybody's.
Councilwoman, before you start, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Councilwoman Porter, I believe, is on the call, so I want to recognize a member of this committee from the 6th. I'm sorry. Is she on?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, we didn't know you would get back so soon, so thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
I know it was tough for you right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilwoman Odette, I'm sorry, you can proceed.
Of course, no problem at all. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Thanks so much for spending the time this afternoon on a really important topic about the commute to school for our young people. You'll hear today, I'm honored that Administrator Holly Arnold from the MTA is here, and she will give some remarks and be available for questions and hear from our young people. So thank you Administrator Arnold for being here. We also have the school system, and then we have students and advocates from the Fund for Educational Excellence and some parents. The Fund for Educational Excellence recently did a study about school commute safety and found that 78% of Baltimore City Public School, High School, and Middle School students take the bus to school. The study also found that 68% of students generally feel safe. We have a lot of students that remainder that feel uneasy in the big crowds, unsafe when it's dark, especially this time of year when it's dark in the morning and in the evening, and taking very, very long commute times to school. And, you know, also, there have been some young women that have experienced sexual harassment on the bus. So today, we're going to hear about all of that and try to work through what some solutions could be. The things I'd like to work on coming out of this are working with the General Assembly to add a seat on the MTA Citizens Advisory Committee for Baltimore City, so that a Baltimore City school student is there. Working with DOT, with our DOT, to implement policies that prioritize buses. Working with MTA and Maryland Department of Transportation to really come up with a better way for complaints regarding safety on the bus, the need for shelters, et cetera. Adding more buses during peak hours and working with all of us to look at what street harassment and sexual harassment, to make sure that we're keeping our children safe. And then, of course, continuing my recurring theme around vacant properties, making sure we're addressing that because as students go to school, next to vacant properties, they all, they learn right away that somebody doesn't care about their community, and that makes a big impact on their learning. So I'm really honored that we're able to take time today to do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I think this will be a great hearing. Again, we'll be hearing from the school system, MTA, the Fund for Educational Excellence, some students and parents. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will go over the agency reports first, so we're calling on the Law Department. Could you give us your report?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. This is Vic Travilla from the City Law Department, and we are prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. The Health Department?
Hello, good evening. My name is Kelly Eastman with the Baltimore City Health Department, and we stand by our report for this bill and recommend favorably on it. Thank you.
Department of Transportation?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, but I just, if I may, given this is a topic that heavily involves Department of Transportation, I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit more in detail about the contents of our report. So thank you for holding this hearing tonight, and kudos to Councilwoman Ramos for kind of bringing this to light. We really do appreciate being here tonight to talk about everything that we're doing and some of the other stakeholders in the room are doing to improve commutes to school for children in the city. The first thing I want to mention is, from the perspective of DOT Complete Streets, so the Complete Streets Ordinance, as you all know, was adopted in December of 2018, and this past March 2021, the actual Complete Streets Manual was published. That manual establishes walking as the highest priority on the modal hierarchy. So it kind of, it really symbolizes the shift that is underway now. Where walking is now going to be prioritized over cars, transit is prioritized over single occupancy vehicles, so on and so forth. So we're really at the beginning of this shift. Additionally, within DOT, we have our ATBS Division, which manages our automated camera operations. To date, all speed cameras located within the city are located within one-half mile of the school. That's per regulations established on the state level. I do say "to date" because we are, as I believe everyone knows, getting prepared to install cameras on IED3, which is a separate measure. Additionally, ATBS oversees operations of red light cameras and truck route cameras. Within the Transit Bureau, Baltimore City DOT oversees the operations of term city circulator and harbor connector, which provide additional commute opportunities for children and students alike. Bicycle improvements and dockless scooter service is also something that we know children are utilizing on their commutes to schools. We also, at times, will submit grant applications for safe routes to school, funding from the state level. That is a grant program overseen by State Highway Administration. SHA ultimately decides on which applicants receive grant funding, and our team estimates that successful applications take roughly three years to complete the application bidding, planning, and implementation process. So those are longer, medium to longer-term ways we can really address safe routes to schools with specific projects. I also want to highlight our improved partnership under the leadership Arnold and her predecessor, our improved partnership with MTA. We have our monthly recurring meetings, which have really maintained open lines of communication between both agencies. And this has really been highlighted recently by our joint East-West Race Grant application being awarded, which is going to lead to over $50 million worth of improvements that I believe Holly will be more prepared to talk about, so I won't steal her thunder. We also, on the legislative policy side, played a pretty strong role in pushing for passage of Transit Safety and Investment Act. That was overridden at the special, the veto was overridden at the special session, so that we're really happy to see that go forward to get more money for transit, which I believe the report says 29,000 city school students depend on MTA. Lastly, DOT and our partnership with city schools is strong as well. Our Safety Division employs roughly 230 seasonal school crossing guards. We work with 21st Century Schools via the Inspire Program to do capital improvements off of school grounds, so sidewalk repairs, ADA ramp repairs, crosswalk refreshments, and repainting. Traffic Division, DOT Traffic Division will regularly receive requests in real time from your offices and from the schools themselves, and we do our best to implement traffic calming. And lastly, DOT has been working with the City Schools Office of System Ability to develop in-service training for Baltimore City School Police, who monitor arrival and dismissal to better understand crashes, Complete Streets infrastructure, and to report infrastructure issues to DOT. So with all that in mind, we stand by our bill report, which is in support of Council Resolution 21-0056R. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. The resolution always also was referred to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Is anyone from their office who discussed their position regarding the resolution?
Mr. Chair, Nina Themlus with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. We don't have a representative from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success on the line, but I am here to serve in their place. The office is supportive of the resolution. They do not play a direct role in a student's commute to or from school, but I'm happy to take any questions directed to their office back to them for follow-up with the committee at a later date, and happy to listen in on all of the other reporting agencies.
I thank you, Nina. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Ms. Nina Themlus, are you here on their behalf also?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Same response there. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement doesn't play a direct role in the commute for children going to or from school, but I'm happy to take any specific questions back to their office and also happy to listen in on the other agencies' reports this evening.
Thank you. So out next, we're taking testimony in this order. Baltimore City Public Schools, Maryland Department of Transportation, MTA, and Fund for Education Excellence. So we're going to allow five minutes for those three testimonies, and we will start off with Baltimore City Public School.
Good evening. I am Lynette Washington, the Chief Operating Officer for Baltimore City Public Schools, and I am going to see how I can share my screen for my presentation. I am not used to this platform. Is that working? Okay, so for this presentation, I'm also going to see if I, there's a way that I can... My apologies, I am definitely not used to using this. Okay, I'm going to just see if I can walk through it. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
The presentation? Okay, great. So I am going to give just a brief overview for about Baltimore City school students who's riding MTA, and then a few feedback that we've received from our school leadership as it relates to safety around MTA used by students, and then a few recommendations. I apologize, I can't figure out how to put the PDF as a screen presentation format. But here we have, and it's going to be just a little difficult if I cannot see everything. So this first slide that I have is basically a breakdown of students that we provide transportation services to. And so most of the students that are on the right side, corner to corner, curb to curb, swing space, and extracurricular activities, they receive yellow bus transportation. The students that are on the other side, under MTA, we have about 32,000 students that rely on MTA transportation services to get to school. Sorry, trying to figure out how I think this is. Okay, I apologize because I'm trying to get it in presentation format, and I think this is how it works, might work. There we go. And it's still not working. Okay. So just generally, for the general MTA services provided to our students, about 40% of Baltimore City school students are eligible for MTA services. And this is traveling back and forth to a particular school site, and I would say that the 40% are, tend to be middle and high school students. This represents about 18% of MTA ridership. And though MTA provides different modes of transportation, most of our students are relying on the local bus. The other service that MTA provides for our schools are tripper buses. And tripper buses are just buses that have altered public, the public service line where you're accommodating our students, but the public still rides on these buses. So there's an AM tripper that starts at a major transit hub. A student will go to that transit hub in order to get onto the tripper. And then there's a PM tripper service that also starts at a school. And I would say that, again, both of them are provided for the public. I cannot give you very definitively why certain schools receive trippers than others. A couple of reasons that we know is that it may be a bell time schedule so to accommodate students, so they're not standing and waiting for a bus, a tripper bus may be provided. And then sometimes it's also based on ridership. Again, I apologize that this is how I'm moving through the presentation. I can't get it on presentation format. The other piece I just want to highlight is that Baltimore City students that use transportation, again, are middle high school students. And most of our middle grade students, they're traveling two miles in order to get to school. And our high school students are probably traveling a lot longer, about four miles on average to get to school. I just want to flag that some elementary students may use MTA if they're riding with an older sibling or with an adult. The commute to school, as you can see, I am providing two maps as just examples, require a number of different transfers. And so this example that we have here in this map is Vanguard Middle School. And it's just the route that, you know, where most middle school students live in proximity of Vanguard. And so this is an example of a lot of our middle schools. A lot of children live within the same section of the city, but they still have to get a commute to school. And so here, about 60% of the students at Vanguard use MTA in order to get to school. And they answer the next one. So the other thing that I think is important is that a lot of times we're asked the question, why can't we? Because of the challenges that students have in riding MTA, why can't we use yellow buses? And one of the things you will see is here, this map is Digital Harbor High School. And this is home locations for those students as it relates to the school. Again, these students travel an average of four miles to get to school, and they're all across the city. So it is highly ineffective and not efficient for us to use yellow buses in order to get students to school. The optimal choice is using MTA. Our yellow buses for students who are in middle and high school that use yellow buses, it is generally because they are eligible through their individualized education plan, so they receive corner to corner or curb to curb services. Here for Digital Harbor, 97% of the students are eligible to use MTA, where only 3% of the students are using yellow buses. So as I said before, we had conversations with some of our school leaders, principals, about some of the challenges that students may be having on MTA. And then the conversation was because we're coming out of, you know, schools being offline because of the pandemic, and then going through hybrid and then coming into full, everyone coming back into school. And we wanted to know just what were some of the concerns that we needed to have conversations and follow-ups with MTA about as we prepare for students to be coming back in school. Also during this time, we're dealing with a driver shortage, so we're going to have a lot of our bell times were impacted by the driver shortage. And so when school started and when schools ends were in time, was very important for us. So some of the things that they said was lengthy wait times for buses and one of the impacts. And so for each one of these, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the impacts. And so some of the impacts were students would crowd around a bus stop waiting for buses for longer periods of time. There are incidents of bullying and fighting. Sometimes when those incidents occurred, there was not a presence of MTA police. And so a lot of times, we had to stretch some of our resources with our school support, police resources, to go off school grounds in order to address incidents at bus stops. There was also times where we would get numerous complaints from principals and also parents that they felt that the bus was not over capacity, but they were passing students. And so students had to wait longer periods of time, and this is a flag and a challenge for us because we're entering winter month. The other issue was, it's a little bit different than the report that was put out by the fund, where some of our leaders indicated that students felt that some of the drivers treated them, treatment were rude and many times around instances if they didn't have their card present in order to get on the bus. And then the other ones were around limited periods of times where we, there are changes that are made. And so if there are challenges that are happening during the school year as it relates to MTA delays because of traffic or roadway challenges, a lot of times the change will happen in terms of adjustments or modifications to the bus schedule in order to accommodate students, will happen twice a year. And a lot of our school leaders, they provide a feedback saying that that period was, it was too long of a time period for students to have to find other accommodations, waiting for that modification to happen. But one of the things I do want to flag is that of the many issues that our leaders provided, a lot of times these issues were addressed at the school level. And if they were not addressed at the school level, they were elevated to our Department of Transportation, whereby we would engage with the MTAs, the school liaison, in order to find a resolution. So some of our recommendations are pretty much similar to other recommendations that have been stated today. We are asking for ability to have some flexibility around the modification of bus schedules, particularly in those situations where it's out of the control of Baltimore schools. And so because of the pandemic, the bus driver shortage would have impact on our bell times, was not within the control of schools. We're also saying that the more data that city schools has from MTA, it allows us to make different types of decisions around bell times and in trying to accommodate and making sure that students have a better experience. Additional tripper services, so that students are not waiting long times for buses that are over capacity, and particularly being able to use some of the data that we may be able to receive from MTA in order to identify schools that might need those additional tripper services. And then we also talked about increasing bus frequency outside of some of your AM and PM peak hours because some of our bell schedules, bell times are not within those peak hours. And particularly this year, because we knew that there was going to be a bus driver shortage, and so more children traveling between those peak hours would be problematic for the district. And so those are our recommendations and our general reflections for today's discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, for that presentation. The next testimonies come from Maryland Department of Transportation, MTA, from Secretary Arnold, who I was just at the MTA new bus terminal over in Midway. And real quick, I had just had the conversation with Secretary Arnold talking about the same thing about the transportation for our public school kids. So Secretary Arnold, it's your testimony.
Councilman, you've elevated me. I'm Administrator Arnold.
Administrator, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't want that promotion, Secretary.
That's the next thing.
No, no, no. He does a great job. I'm attempting to share, and it's not allowing me to do that. Is there? Somebody could help me with that?
Ms. Karen?
Give me that permission?
Yes.
I have it now. Thank you. And I'm attempting to share a PowerPoint. I hope everyone can see that. Okay, great. Let me put it in. Sorry. Maybe some people can see it. Okay. There we go. Great, everyone can see it.
Before you start, we would like to have a copy of your presentation.
Yeah, I'm happy to send it after this.
Thank you.
And so, you know, thank you so much for having us today. I just want to stress, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to be here, the opportunity to discuss with you all. I'm going to try and keep it to five minutes. I might go a little bit over, but again, appreciate the time. I do have a team here with me who can help to answer questions at the end, including our Acting Chief of Police, Jerome Howard, who can speak on some of the safety-specific issues if those do come up. So for the program, my name is Holly Arnold. I'm the Administrator at MTA. I've been with MTA for about 10 years, primarily on the capital programming and planning side. I'm a longtime transit writer and an active proponent of incorporating more feedback from all of our writers into our planning processes, including students. And so I think this is a good opportunity to talk through that. So I'm going to go today through a quick overview of MTA, what we do, who we are, how school service fits into that, and then just a few thoughts at the end. So who are we as MTA? You know, we have six service modes, bus, light rail, metro subway, our paratransit system, mark commuter rail, and commuter bus. We're the 13th largest transit system in the US. We have a little over 900 million in an operating budget annually and a $4 billion capital budget. So I wanted to share this graphic because I think it's kind of helpful, and I like the title of this hearing, right? So from the front door to the school door. And it really shows how much of a partnership this truly is getting students to school. You know, we have a, you know, row house here. I live in the city. It's kind of looks like my house. So when you leave your house, you're walking past, hopefully not vacant houses, but in some cases vacant houses. You're walking on sidewalks that are owned by the city. You get to the bus stop, which is kind of a joint city-state responsibility. Then folks get on the bus, get off the bus, either at the school or a couple of blocks to the school, again, walking past on those city sidewalks. And so it really does show how many different groups are involved in getting students to school. You know, it's not just MTA, it's not just the schools, it's not just the city DOT. It really is all of us who need to focus and work together in partnership on that. So for my presentation today, I do want to focus on the world that I kind of control, which is on the buses, how we provide those schedules, what that looks like, and how we ensure the safety on the buses. So that's really what we're going to be looking at in this presentation. So an overview of school service, just some quick facts. You know, we provide school service on our fixed route bus system within a quarter mile to over 260 schools in the region, not just in Baltimore City. It also includes Baltimore County and the Underdale County. Over 170 schools in the city have bus service within a quarter of a mile, and we provide that school's tripper service that was referred to previously, supplemental service. So what's that supplemental services, I'm going to refer to tripper service a lot, is kind of a deviation of our fixed route. So for example, I live near ACE here in Hampton, and so that school is served by several trippers. So the local link 21, the local link 94, and the local link 22 all do deviations from their fixed routes to provide that school service, to ensure that the students are able to have a, not as far of a walk to the front door of the school in the morning. to ensure that the students are able to have a, not as far of a walk to the to the front door of the school in the morning. In the afternoon, they will actually queue up at the school. Once they fill up with students, we'll leave and go back on their their normal route. Students make up about thirteen percent of total MTA ridership pre-pandemic. Still kind of gathering numbers in this mid-post pandemic world that we're living in now. MTA is really committed to a collaborative approach in working with city schools. You know, we have regular meetings. We do want to ensure that schools have adequate transit access. We established a task force this past September and we have a memorandum of understanding that details kind of responsibilities for us and for the schools and regularly kind of update and take a look at that. We do coordinate with city schools on our bell times to ensure that we're providing service so that students can, you know, get picked up after bells and make it there on time. We do have some challenges though. You know, there is a federal charter service policy that guides how we can provide service. So we receive federal funds. We're public transit. We cannot provide charter service, which is including school bus service with with our system. We have to have open service. It has to be available to anyone who wants to use it. We also can't provide door-to-door service, you know, as a public transit agency, that's not what we do. We provide kind of that core service for the public. So that's one challenge that limits how we're able to provide the service. The geography of school choice also is a little bit of a challenge in providing student service. That map that Dr. Washington shared was actually really interesting, right? So for Digital Harbor, you have students coming from all over. And so one of the issues that we run into is that, you know, that's one school. You, you know, Poly, Western, Mervo, it can keep, you know, listing, they all have students coming from all over, which makes it tricky to provide that service. You know, for example, you know, public transit providing service to downtown Baltimore, thirteen percent of our riders come to downtown Baltimore as their destination every day. They're coming from all over, but they're going to one place. With the school service and the school choice, the geography is a little trickier because again, it's lots of students coming from all over, going to lots of different places. So we do our best to ensure that students have a single seat ride if possible, but it's not possible in all cases. And then other just kind of environmental factors are impacting our ability to provide service. So first is just operating in an urban environment, you know, our buses get in accidents. They have water main breaks that impact their ability to provide service. Those kinds of things exist on a day-to-day basis. And currently, we're also struggling as well with the operator shortage. You know, that's a national thing that has impacted school buses, but it's also impacting transit. And so, you know, I never want to cut service, but right now because of the operator shortage, it's impacting our reliability. So something we're actively working on, getting more operators in, continuing hiring and training, but it has an impact for us as well. So I want to talk a little bit about safety and security for students. So this is, this is huge for me. It is a top priority for our our agency. You know, as a transit rider, I want to ensure that everyone feels safe on our buses, especially students. So we have an MTA police force who is completely dedicated to ensuring that everyone feels safe on our system. They coordinate very closely with Baltimore City Police and with school police. We have, again, MOUs and agreements with them to ensure that we're working closely together and coordinating on these issues. They do hold monthly school tasks, task force meetings to discuss issues. They, our police have details at the major transfer hubs in the morning and evening during the bell times, you know, Madonna and Lexington Market West Baltimore, to ensure that presence and that people are feeling safe. Our police also use data to determine what the hotspots are. You know, if we hear about fights, we'll deploy and ensure that we're using that data and that our police are, have an active presence in those areas. They do frequent vehicle checks. We've run student awareness campaigns. And I have to say, I'm very proud of our police, you know, for the seventh year in a row, MTA is the safest U.S. transit system for part one crimes. So we do not have a lot of crime on our buses and that is largely due to the the work that the men and women of MTA police do. And again, using data, we track it very closely. So this current fiscal or school year, school-related incidents are down fifty-six percent compared to the prior school year. So let's just talk a little bit about service planning and how we develop our routes and schedules. So this is overall how we develop our routes and schedules. So we have kind of three main goals that we're looking at when we're doing our service planning. So the first is prioritizing access and equity. We want to take a look at the areas that have the highest transit need. And that was really looking at areas where people don't have cars, right? So there's a thirty percent of the population in the city doesn't have access to a car, wanting to ensure that those people have access. We look at areas of high poverty. We look at areas where there's a large amount of people with disabilities, seniors, and again, students, where people live and identify where they're trying to go. So we want to make sure that we're connecting them with jobs, opportunities, services, including schools. One of our goals is to improve reliability and reduce travel time. So we want to ensure that folks are having the most reliable service and is, again, if possible, the quickest service that we can do. So we adjust our runtimes to make sure that we're adhering to our schedules and that people can rely on us. We try and do as many direct connections as we can between routes and destinations so that folks can have that single seat ride. And as Leah mentioned earlier, we also are partnering with the city to establish transit priority improvements to allow our buses to bypass congestion. So, you know, that, for example, that fifty million dollar raise grant will have ten miles of dedicated bus lanes. So anyone traveling along that route, the buses will be able to bypass traffic. We have a commitment in the Central Maryland Regional Transit Plan and the city is partnering with us to have at least twenty-five miles of dedicated bus lanes in the city by twenty twenty-five. And then finally, you know, on a regular basis, we monitor crowding and we adjust the level of service to match demand. We look at our routes regularly and make improvements based on ridership patterns. If we learn that there are, you know, new job centers, new schools, ensure that we can provide that service. And so in some cases, we may add buses to match passenger demand and other cases will reduce it. And we also look at the routes to improve efficiency and ensure that people are getting where they need to go. So how do students fit into this? So I have on here our annual service change calendar. So as Dr. Washington mentioned, we do change our service three times a year. It is very much tied to city schools' calendar. So for example, our fall service change, which is our major service change where we do the most changes every year, is tied to the when school starts. So we always do our service change on a Sunday. School starts on Monday. We tie it to that to ensure that we're making those changes in coordination with the school. We do a winter service change typically happens in February. It's usually pretty minor. So those are kind of fixing stops, fixing routes where we've been having issues adjusting based on ridership. And then the summer service change as well ties to when school ends. So that happens in June. We always end right after school. And so it's tied to the school year. We do receive information from city schools on enrollment and home addresses. It's anonymized by the end of May. We make those adjustments in June and build that data into our schedules throughout the year. So we have the larger bus schedule and school trippers are integrated into that. So as I mentioned before, it's kind of deviations from our fixed routes. And so very often those operators, either before or after they provide that tripper service, are also providing kind of normal bus service. So we can't disaggregate it. And again, that is federal law. We're not allowed to do that specialized service for schools. And we have, you know, ongoing dialogue with school leadership throughout the process. We have an entire position dedicated to schools as our school services coordinator, Stacy Harley. She does a great job. She's constantly on the phone with the schools, with principals, working to ensure that student voices are being heard as part of the service change process. So just talking a little bit about how we've looked at the analysis of the approach for this current school year and we're always looking for feedback and suggestions on how we can refine it, again, in partnership with the schools to make it better. So we take a look at the existing school service through, you know, a review of the trip reutilization in terms of transit to school. One thing that we often see is that we will provide trippers and then they're not being used. And so we have limited resources and so we want to make sure that we're being as efficient and effective as possible. And so we do look, you know, based on ridership, how those trippers are being used. We look at how many transit-eligible students there are, as well as the existing service and does it provide access and coverage for students that they can use? You know, when schools relocate or have a change in the number or geographic distribution of students, we'll take a look and see if we need to have additional trippers. And we develop school profiles to evaluate kind of the existing supplemental service. And I'll share one of those in just a minute. So this is this kind of specific evaluation criteria. Again, utilization, how much is it being used? What are the passengers per trip? We look at load. So is it standing room only? Is it crush load? In which case, hey, we probably need to add another bus or, you know, is it seated load and there's still room for more? We look at accessibility. So in terms of travel time, so we are, again, trying to make sure that, you know, students aren't traveling two hours to get to school. We want to limit that as much as possible. And so how can we make that as accessible as possible? Again, we look at the base level of service nearby. So how frequent is it coming and what does that look like? And is it kind of reasonably accessible to the school? We also look at walkability demographics and if we're making changes to our base service and how that will come into play. Walkability is a big one. We do want to ensure, you know, if there's sidewalks nearby, that students have the ability to kind of get off the bus and walk to the school. So this is an example of a school bus profile for the stadium school. So you can see here, there's a lot of information that we take a look at for our trippers. So each profile includes a map. So you can see we have a walk shed here of a quarter mile and a half mile and keep track of how much fixed route service is within that that half mile and quarter mile. So in the case of Stadium School, we have three city link buses, three local links and three express bus links all within a half mile of the school. So it's pretty well-served by our normal kind of fixed route bus. We have numbers here in terms of how many students are eligible, what the arrival bell time is and what the dismissal bell time is. And then you can see here on the right, we keep track of, you know, the number of trips and the riders per trip. So you can see it, you know, from the twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen school year into the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty school year, the ridership did increase. So that's something we want to look at. And again, consider, do we need to add more service? In which case you can see here that we did that. We added another PM tripper in the twenty nineteen school year for this this school. So we very much take a look at this. We updated each school year. And, you know, we're happy to discuss in partnership with the with the city schools how we can improve this process. But it's pretty data intensive to ensure that we're trying to provide the best service we can. Not going to spend a ton of time here, but this is just a list of this current school year and then the list of schools with trippers and how many. As you can see, we do provide a hundred and forty-nine school trippers to provide that access to students. So quickly on outreach and engagement, so we are actively working to improve our overall engagement for all riders, but in particular for students. We participate in school choice fairs. You can see here a picture pre-pandemic of us handing out schedules at the school choice fairs. We've partnered with student groups. You can see the picture there to do some kind of dynamic looking at maps, right? So students can come up and we will work with them on Google Maps, say, hey, this is what your commute will look like. This is how long it will take. I believe there was a school choice fair yesterday. It was virtual. And so we want to participate in that. And so, you know, we're actively out there trying to work with students and have folks understand what those commutes will look like. We participate in back-to-school events. MTA police do school supply drives. I give out backpacks, work on, you know, career Fridays. Our planning department is also working quite a bit on coordinating with city schools as we're working on designing our service and also designing capital improvements. So we recently had a design hub work, so we're designing a new transit hub. And so we had a workshop with Dunbar students to get a feel for, you know, what does it look like for them? What is their experience at that hub and how can we make them feel safer and better there? And we are also planning on starting a student advisory council in twenty twenty-two. You know, Councilwoman Roma has mentioned our citizens advisory council and we think it's a great idea. We'd love to hear more from students. And so we think a great way to do that would be through a student advisory council where we can really kind of hone in on the specific needs of students and ensure that, you know, they feel able to speak up, you know, not necessarily surrounded by a bunch of adults. And so I think that will be a really good thing. We would like to partner with city schools on that effort. So finally, you know, how can we help? How can you guys help? We, again, we're here in partnership. We absolutely want feedback. If there are specific physical improvements at bus stops, you know, shelters, other amenities that folks are looking for, please let us know. I have included the phone number here of our school services coordinator. Again, she is dedicated forty hours a week to working with the schools and always wants feedback on how we can do better. When we have our proposed service changes, again, every fall we do those kind of major changes. And so we need comments from the public and feedback on how we're doing, how we can do better, what the service looks like. And so we want folks to participate in that. And then, you know, continuing to get involved with our future planning processes. We have been doing school surveys as part of the Central Maryland Regional Transit Plan, special events, advisory committee meetings. We definitely want that feedback on the existing service, potential future service and specific issues and hotspots. So I'll wrap up just in conclusion, you know, we absolutely are focused on improving the transit experience for all, including city students, city school students. You know, we're going to continue to work to improve the rider information and notifications around disruptions. You know, I mentioned earlier, we have issues sometimes operating in an urban environment and don't always provide that that best notification. I will say because we have our city schools coordinator, if we ever have to have an impact to a tripper bus, she is absolutely on the phone immediately to the principals to ensure that they know that, hey, this is what has happened and what we're going to do to remedy it. We're going to continue to, you know, analyze our service levels, look at the schools, work to see how we can make those improvements to our fixed route service and our tripper service and work in partnership with Baltimore City Public Schools. So I'm happy to take any questions at the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Administrator Arnold. I'll make sure I don't promote you on this hearing again. Before we start taking our testimony, for those persons who signed up, testify, there was a question in the chat. Oh, I'm sorry. Just skipped over Funds for Excellence. I'm so sorry. Our next testimony comes from Funds for Excellence, Educational Excellence.
Thank you, sir. And would I be able to have access to share a presentation? All right, great. All right. So my name is Kwan Wyatt, Program Director at the Fund for Educational Excellence. Thank you for allowing me this time today. Last year, we interviewed two hundred and seventy-four city school students to learn about their experiences getting to and from school on public transit. And those interviews are the basis of our recent report, Not in Service. Just to highlight some of these stats here, twenty-nine thousand city school students rely on MTA to get to school. And we estimate that they make up about eighteen percent of the annual ridership on MTA's core service. Even though students are a significant share of MTA's ridership, their needs are not adequately accounted for in service development and certainly not in the way that adults' needs are taken into account. Here are the ten largest themes that emerged from our analysis of the interviews with the students we spoke to. Most of them really fit into two larger categories. One category being that of transit reliability and its impact on students' academics and opportunities. And the second category being student safety. I'm going to mostly focus on those two large umbrellas this evening. First, to highlight some of the key elements here. One thing I want to highlight is the students told us that what makes them feel unsafe while traveling on public transit the most is really when they have to commute during travel times where it's extremely early in the morning or after dark. Also, when they have to navigate car traffic and unsafe driving conditions when crossing the street and when they're in crowded situations with a lot of unfamiliar people. They also felt as if it's very common to see arguments and physical fights break out on public transit and that often makes them feel uncomfortable and very on edge on their way to school before their school day even starts. For example, it was one student that I particularly spoke to in our time interviewing students. Her name was Deasia. She was a senior at the time at Vivian T. Thomas Medical Arts Academy. And she mentioned a story essentially where she was on her way home from school with her god sister. They're waiting at a bus stop and they get approached by a group of guys. The group of guys approached them. One of the guys pulled out a gun and told them to unlock their phone. One of the guys pulled out a gun and told them to unlock their phones and to reset the phones. Essentially, they robbed them for their iPhones and other items. And this is an extreme example, but there were so many, so many instances when we talked to students where they either were victims of actual violence or unfortunately had to experience community violence that they that they saw on their way to school. And this is the stuff that they have to experience at six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning before they even reach the classroom. So you have to really understand from a psychological standpoint, the type of mind frame that that puts students in when they're supposed to be in a place to have a mental space to learn. When experiencing these type of traumas, it's very difficult to be in that mindset. And that's what a lot of our students have to deal with every day going to school. This next slide focuses on reliability of transit. To highlight some of the key elements here, most students told us that they rely on MTA buses. They get to and from school most of the time. And most students found those buses to be unreliable. Some students felt that buses were more reliable than not, especially the supplemental buses that run on certain routes. Now supplemental buses, as Administrator Arnold mentioned earlier, are buses that run on MTA routes that run close to schools during times where there is expected to be a mass of students on those routes. As she referred to them, they're called tripper buses. I really think that they're a great thing. But as she mentioned, you know, they only can deviate from regular routes a minimal amount. And one of the key things I think is important to highlight is that most students also rely on regular routes. They rely on regular service. So if a student, like most students, has to catch at least two buses, that second bus, that last bus that they catch may be a tripper bus and that's great. But the first bus or that first and second bus, a lot of times, it's just a regular route. And students aren't factored in to those regular routes significantly in any significant way. For example, in 2015 and 2018, MTA conducted an origin destination study that essentially took a look at where people were going and in a large way determined what routes would be a part of regular service. Students were not included in those surveys. And that's just an example of how students, even though they're 18% of the ridership, aren't taken into account oftentimes. And in that way, they largely get the short end of the stick. In this particular slide, we take a look at on time performance for three different times. The top yellow is the on time performance for 2019 in October. The middle, the blue, is on time performance right before the pandemic hit in February 2020. And the bottom, the top, the top is actually the 2021. I'm sorry, most recently, November, weekend, November. The middle slide is 2020 before the pandemic. And the bottom slide is October 2019. The trend here is, you know, there's been some improvement, as you can see, from that bottom slide, which is October 2019 to February 2020, mostly due to infrastructural changes, transit signal priority, designated bus lanes. But even though those improvements happened, there's still a significant number of routes, as you can see here with that yellow line, where that improvement has regressed. And for that week of November 15th through 19th, 2021, for students, the on time performance rate was just 70%. And if you think about it, if you're looking to go to school or you're looking to go to work as an employee and you start your car and it only starts on time 70% of the time, that's going to put you in a pretty difficult position when you're trying to get to work on time. And that's the thing that our students have to deal with every day. This next slide focuses on lost learning time. When transit isn't reliable, it can lead to students missing valuable time from the classroom. We've heard from many students that they're late at least once and sometimes multiple times per week. Public transportation is the primary reason that they cited for being late to school. They also told us about the negative impact of being just 10 minutes late for school, what it can have in terms of the impact on their grades. We talked to a number of students. One student in particular told me that, you know, due to being late in that first period class, they saw a decrease in just that class, while all of their other grades stayed exactly the same. Another young man named Hyatun Day, who went to Baltimore City Polytechnic Institute, told me that in the last quarter before the pandemic, he was late to school 23 times that quarter. So essentially, he missed more than half of his first period class. He missed that first period class more than half of the time, a significant portion of it. We feel that this is just completely unacceptable for our students to have to go through things like that. This stat at the bottom also I want to highlight. For the school year 2018, 2019, that roughly 20,000 city school students collectively retarded 335,000 times for their first period class. So that's on average 15 lates per student. You know, we feel our students definitely deserve safer, viable and consistent transportation that allows them to get to school on time without incident. When they miss out on valuable instructional time and when they miss out on extracurricular and other enrichment opportunities due to unreliable transit, we're allowing them to be shortchanged of their full potential. So I pray everyone on this call to take this issue extremely serious so that we can begin the much needed work to improve the plight of our students. Thank you again for your time. I'd like to open up for any potential questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Can we get a copy of your testimony?
Absolutely, sir.
Before we start with our students who already signed up in advance to testify, there was one question in the chat and Ms. Marguerite will read that question. It's for the panelists.
This question is from Reginald Binbop. What percent of students leverage rail, light rail or the subway?
I think that's probably for me. And unfortunately, I don't have a specific number on that. We do know that the larger percentage of students use the bus service rather than lay rail and metro subway, although some do. It's just a unfortunately, a function of our fare collection system doesn't collect that specific data. We're getting a new fare collection system that will. And so we should have it, you know, within the next few years. But as of right now, I just don't have that.
Thank you so much. So the testimony from students and others who are already signed up in advance, each speaker is allowed two minutes. So Ms. Marguerite will read the list of those students who signed up in advance.
Before I start, I'd like to say that there were several people on this list. I've only identified approximately 50% of them in the attendees list. So after I finish going down my list, could you please use the raise hand function to let me know that you want to testify? First up will be Rosalyn Johnson, grandparent of a public school student.
Yes, yes. Can you hear me? I was trying to get off the camera, but anyway, yes, I'm Rosalyn Johnson. My granddaughter, Lamia Taylor, goes to Baltimore Design. I deal with her leaving the house at 6:30 in the morning to get to school at 8:30. And half the time, it'd be like an hour, she'd call me and the bus is scheduled to pick her up as in time or when it do is fully passes her by. She likes to stay at after school activities. She doesn't because afraid to get home. And we live by Parkside and that's Heron Run. We have a park called Heron Run. At 5:30, it's dark. She's getting off the bus, hitting the walk and long stretch. So I'm always worried because sometimes it takes even between two to three hours for her to get home every day. I didn't understand. I see a lot of schools have like my granddaughter that's in middle school. It's always a couple buses there waiting for them. They're the first ones to get on the bus. I never understood why. And I have seen other schools like that too. I can't, they have a bus like the pink and the red and buses pass them by every day. Why can't they have a bus there to pick those kids up? So they can be the first one on a bus. Why can't they start their ride out from the school? Maybe one or two of the main buses that the kids there need. So that was my answer to my question. And Lamia is right here. Lamia, you can explain what's... Well, Lamia is not much of a talker, so I had to speak for both of us. So it's hard and I worry every day for her getting home. Two, three hours is not really, you know, it's unacceptable and I don't understand why.
Thank you. Next up is a parent of a public school student, Cleopatra Martley.
Ken?
Yes, go ahead. Oh, wait a minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Cleopatra Marty. I am a parent. I'm also a teacher at James McHenry Elementary and Middle School. My sons are attend Baltimore Montessori. And we utilize public transit to get to work and to school. And it has been a very exasperating and troubling experience. My sons, I'm very concerned about them because a lot of times they contact me. I have them contact me when they get to school, when they're at the stop. And several times, more often than not, the bus is passing them when they get to the stop. And I can't seem to understand why because it's not crowded. Their stop, our stop is actually the second on the yellow bus route. So I don't understand why the bus is passing them by. Secondly, they also have an opportunity to travel to another bus. Can you hear me?
Yes.
They have, they also have an opportunity to travel to, on a gold bus. And that way is very sketchy. They have to pass by a lot of abandoned homes. And now that it's getting dark early, it's really kind of unsettling the route that they have to walk to get to the bus stop. And then they're met with unquestionable people that are either on drugs or inebriated. And it's very disturbing. And for myself, I can kind of handle it, but I'm always worried about their safety and wondering why, you know, there are not enough bus stop areas for them to sit down or the area is not well lit or that there's no, some kind of presence there in terms of security or policing to watch over them or enough buses that are dispatched, especially during school time, when children need to go to school. And as a teacher...
Mrs. Cleopatra?
Yes.
Yes, we are allowing two minutes for each speaker because we have a whole list. Sorry to interrupt you. Can you kind of like sum up? Thank you.
Yes, okay. So basically, as a role, my role as a parent and a teacher, my number one concern is safety and accessibility for not only my children and myself, but my students so that they feel safe going to school and knowing that they're going to get to school safely and that they're going to be there in a timely fashion. So my, my concern and my, my hope is that, that there will be more services provided and more, more measures put in to make sure that there are more buses and more policing provided. So these children can have a way to have one less thing to worry about when they are going to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is, did you have to say something, Mr. Chair?
Administrator Arnold and Mrs. Marty, are you, you talking about the Greymount Avenue stop? I believe, am I correct?
I'm out the stop on, it's Cloverdale and McCullough.
Okay.
Cloverdale and McCullough, that's when they take the yellow bus. When they take the, the gold bus, it's, it's on North and Drewett, Drewett Hill, Drewett Hill Avenue.
Thank you. I believe Administrator Arnold wrote your information down. She'll look into that. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And can I just think globally? I hate hearing that people are being passed up. That's not something that we ever instruct our operators to do unless the bus is, you know, full at a crush load. So if that's happening, I would encourage folks, you know, send us that information. We do have a call center hotline that can be called. We will look into that incident and coach the operator just to ensure that, you know, if the bus was, if the bus was full and they were passing up, that makes sense. But if not, then we'll coach them on how they should be making sure that they're stopping to pick people up.
Administrator Arnold, can you give us the hotline number? I don't know if they have it. Is it possible? In the chat, put in the chat.
I'm blanking out on top of my head.
That's all right, make in the chat, it's fine. And then whoever have any concerns, you can...
Yeah, Rowan Bennett, our Director of Service Development, just put it in the chat. It's 4105395000.
Okay, thank you.
Danielle Sweeney?
Hi, thank you, thank you. This is Danielle Sweeney with the Central Maryland Transportation Alliance. I'm here to tell you that a well-funded transportation system is vitally important for students to realize their academic potential. And as you listen to students and parents' stories tonight, they will tell you how well or how poorly MTA is working for them. Please take them seriously. The MTA is a system that struggles with reliability. According to the Federal Transit Administration, MTA has high breakdown rates on all of its modes. On, on top of the breakdowns, MTA, like agencies all over the country, is currently dealing with a driver shortage. And that makes service even harder to deliver. So when students share their stories tonight, please take them seriously. Thank you.
Next is Matt Matthew, last name R O D. R O D R I G U E Z. You are unmuted. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? All right. My name is Matthew Rodriguez. I live in Charles Village and I'm a computer science teacher at Digital Harbor High School. This is my third year in the classroom. I've definitely noticed the correlation between my students' academics and their transit experiences. Many of my students struggle to complete their homework due to arriving home late after long commutes from school. And the majority of my students struggle to make it to school on time in the morning and often miss most of their first period class. I always remember my first year teaching, first day teaching, I had 35 students on my roster on the first day. I was expecting, you know, roughly that many. And when the first bell rang, I had three students in my classroom. Most of these students are late due to inconsistent busing and transit issues. When I asked my students to share their experiences with public transportation, I heard a range of ways it impacted their arrival to school, their mindset when they arrived, and also their ability to access opportunities after school. This is largely due to long and consistent commute times coupled with safety concerns. One of my students, Tristan, is unable to be here tonight. Tristan is a ninth grade student in my computer science class at Digital Harbor High School. His commute is from McCullough Homes, which is about two and a half miles from the school. Depending on which route he takes, he has between 10 to 15 stops in those two and a half miles. Tristan's testimony was submitted in writing prior to the hearing. However, I will be reading Tristan's words now. So from Tristan, "I am consistently late because the buses are packed and past my stop. I live in McCullough Homes and the buses regularly come..." I live in McCullough Homes and the buses regularly come late. Also, because the buses are packed, I'm worried about getting sick. Also, when there are a lot of people at all the stops, the bus stops take a lot longer and people take a long time to get on. This also makes me late for school. Also, I don't like to walk to and from transit when it's not light outside. If there were more buses that ran before and after school, they would be less crowded and I would worry less about getting sick or being late. Also, bus operators should allow city school students to board buses, even if they have lost their one card or left it at home. There were times where I was late or didn't go to school because I wasn't allowed on the bus with my one card. There is no reason why this can't be addressed for students like Tristan or why transit can't get him effectively and reliably around town. There's tremendous opportunity to address the problems. Uplifted in this hearing, as an educator, I ask Maryland Department of Transportation and City Council to center student experiences. As it considers how to spend the historic levels of federal transportation funding, we are slated to receive from the Build Back Better bill. We must invest in transit if we want to close the opportunity gap for our students. Thank you."
Last on my list is Sadie Baker, teacher. I don't have anyone else that I can identify. So if you would like to testify, could you please use the raise hand function? If not, I will go to the attendees who called in. Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Hi. Yes. I am a teacher in Baltimore City Schools. This is my ninth year in the classroom. I also have worked with the Fund for Educational Excellence and I interviewed fifty-one of the students. There were two hundred and seventy-four students who were interviewed for the study. So I, I interviewed a lot of them. I wanted today to share the experience of one of my students, the seventh grader, who is in my class this year. Unfortunately, I'm not able to do that in her words today because of her absences and tardies this week due to her rides on the buses. Because the, of the four school days we've had this week, she was present only two of those days. And then the day that she was there for the entire school day, she had to spend that time making up missing work for the time that she was not in school. So she didn't have time to write testimony with me. So I'm going to now move on to reading testimony for two other young women. These are not students that I've worked with personally, but these testimonies are very, very representative of students that I spoke to during the interview process for the study. The first is from Ashley Portillo, who lived in Greecity Town, but now lives closer to Dundalk. And she will graduate from Baltimore City College, class of twenty twenty-five. Ashley said, "I have to wake up early to take the bus and sometimes it arrives too early or too late when on the app it says it was supposed to come on a different time. I have to deal with this because currently this is my only way of transportation. And when going home, I also depend on the bus to take me there, even if they pass my sister and me or have some dangerous experiences. We still need to take the bus to arrive home. Because I don't trust that I would be safe on the bus after dark, I do not participate in after-school activities. I would feel safer if there was less harassment around bus stops. I also don't stay after school for the help that I need because I need to catch the bus immediately home because there are no later transit options for me. I no longer am in club activities because of my long bus schedule. Sometimes I get home so late due to unreliable transit, I have not completed my school assignments. Almost three times, the bus has passed us, the students, when some could still fit in the bus. Then on other times, when my sister and me are walking to the bus stop to go to school, the bus is already there and goes without stopping, even though the app doesn't show that until after, making us run to the next bus stop or wait for another one, making us late. I think that this would be better if the MTA ran more buses more frequently. My life would be different if elected leaders and MTA officials improved transit because I would feel safer by going home and be less stressed on the bus because of time. The second story I'd like to share is from a student who lives in Sedonia and is a tenth grader at Baltimore Design School. She said, "Transit impacts my sleep and well-being. School opens at eight forty-five and I have to be in class at nine AM. I have to wake up at five in order to take two buses to get to school. Late buses have impacted my attendance dramatically. Sometimes I get to school two hours late, which means I've missed two classes. When I stay for after-school activities, I get out at five forty-five. At that point, it is dark and not safe. I have to depend on a family member to pick me up, but this is not always an option as my father works out of state. The bus is not safe for me anymore. The MTA knows we have after-school programs. One of the reasons I don't like catching the bus is because kidnapping is likely in my area. I have been stopped by a few cars and there are many occasions when people try to get me in their car. It is scary and I don't like it. I don't have anything valuable on me. I bring pepper spray to protect myself. Two to three weeks ago, I had a case where I was followed to my bus stop. I kept seeing the same car. I tried to stay around people. I finally got to my bus stop and a car stopped right in front of me and an old man offered me a ride. I said no, but he kept circling around me. Luckily, there was a fire station near my stop and I went in and spoke and to the sergeants and had them look out for me. They told me they got me and that they were sorry I had to experience that. It could have been worse. Luckily, they were there, but it could have escalated very quickly. If MTA were safer and more reliable, I would get to school on time and get home on time. I would be less sick, I would be more prepared and more eager to go to school. I shouldn't have to worry about my safety going to and from school. So that's the end of the student testimonies that I'm reading today. But I just want to reiterate that these are themes that I heard from students over and over and over again when I spoke to them. I heard from many young women who experienced harassment from people walking and driving by, harassment at bus stops and harassment on the buses themselves. And currently, there's not really any useful way for young women to report this that they feel like they know about or feel comfortable doing. They could go into school and tell their school administration. I suppose they could report it to MTA police. But without there being a designated system for this that is clearly communicated to students, we aren't going to have the ability to deal with this on a system-wide issue that really needs to be dealt with. So thank you for hearing the voices of those students today and I hope you give it some thought.
I've identified two other people on the list. Madeline Morrison and Meredith Shaw. We'll come back to you because I believe the chair wants to take questions from the members of the committee. I just wanted you to know that I know you're in there. We'll come back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll take questions from the comments and concerns from the committee members and council persons. So I'm gonna start off with the Vice President of Baltimore City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Middleton. And it's two questions from the sixth district. Council Vice President Milton?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first of all, want to thank Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this issue to our attention. It's a very serious concern. I definitely appreciate the testimony from students, teachers, and just everyone that is really involved in making sure that the students in our city ride safely, walk safely. And just, you know, there's so many other things that they have to deal with. And to add this problem just makes it really bad. I guess my questions would be to Liam. And Liam, you can answer the best, best way you can. This school, this city is also going through school closings. And, you know, their students are being relocated to other schools. There's been design changes at intersections to make passage either walking or riding bikes or catching the bus. And, you know, there's been problems with keeping those areas clean for safe walking, especially the bike, the bike lanes. The question would be, are, is there a team? I know we're coming through COVID. Is there a team or discussion on how to keep these areas clean on a regular basis? Because that's dangerous too. Students can step on, you know, things and trip and fall and, and, you know, that's another added safety problem. Could the Department of Transportation comment on that, please?
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously when there's concerns like this, we definitely appreciate kind of getting that notification from your respective offices. Councilwoman, I know you've notified us of a few problematic areas. You know, it's definitely something that probably needs a little bit more work, just to be completely honest. And it's something that requires some, a bit of coordination at times with DPW. We do have some capacity at DOT to do some like general vegetation management and general kind of like cleaning of debris. But when we're talking like larger bulk items, illegal dumping, stuff like that, it needs to be coordinated with, with DPW. The bike lane infrastructure, I know like, let's use snow exam, a snow removal as an example. We've had to work to procure vehicles that are, are kind of smaller and designed to navigate those smaller spaces. So getting this feedback today might be the perfect opportunity for us to kind of revisit, you know, maintenance during non-snow months. So thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you. And then the second part, kudos for you, for DOT and the school system. We're really working together in that Inspire program with a number of these schools closing. I know there's been kind of pilot intersections, major intersections that really are starting to end up being failures as, you know, because students have to walk through these or bike or what, and the buses through these intersections. Have you considered this using ARPA money to actually redesign the intersections instead of putting temporary white poles that get knocked down and still cause problems?
That's a great question, Council Vice President. And I'm glad you brought it up because we were really excited when ARPA dollars were announced and there was the whole application process. Unfortunately, there are federal kind of restrictions on how that funding can be applied. And for the stuff that we really need at DOT, like ADA, traffic calming, that type of stuff, ARPA dollars are not eligible for the, like, those projects aren't eligible for ARPA dollars, unfortunately. So that's.
It sounds like you're, I guess the subject should be redirecting, figuring out ways to redirect money that's already in place or you, you don't have in place. It seems to be some heavy conversation on that. Because, you know, this is an important subject and the safety of, you know, our parents and students as they go to school is just very, is, is for me like a priority and I'm sure for all of our other council members.
Yeah, and there, there has been since Director Sharkey came on and we've kind of tweaked the capital budgets a little bit more, a little bit more each year. And you saw that with the recent Raise Grant Award. That included a ten million dollar local match and that came from DOT. So there is the ten million that came from DOT, the eighteen million that came from M dot MTA. And that combined twenty-eight million leveraged an additional twenty-two million in federal dollars for east-west improvements. And that's like bump outs, that's bus lanes, signal prioritization, better bus shelters, ADA ramps. So it covers a lot of the stuff that we're, we're talking about tonight. Is it going to improve the entire system, the entire network of city roads? No, it's not even going to come close, but it's a step in the right direction. It's an example of us kind of being creative, leveraging those kind of finite resources to secure significant investment. We're going to have to think more creatively to, to fund some of this stuff. And we're also, you know, we are shifting existing dollars away. We have a quick build fund where we're literally looking at what are the highest crash intersections? What are the most dangerous intersections for pedestrians and people walking around? And, you know, ranking those and applying quick build treatments. So we're trying to do what we can within, within that kind of limited capacity.
Thank, thank you for your answers. This is about really raising that awareness and making sure that your team is, is on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice President. The next committee member is Councilwoman Porter. Councilwoman Porter? Um, I don't, I believe Councilman Bullock said he might leave at six thirty at another. If he's still on, he, Council.
Oh, yes. Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to echo a lot of what Vice President Middleton mentioned. First, thanking our colleague, Councilwoman Ramos, for getting this on the agenda today. Again, it's a very timely and important subject. Also doubling down on what was mentioned earlier as it relates to school. So last night, there was a school board hearing and I know, you know, both councilmen or chairman has been also active in terms of schools and thinking about proximity for our young people in terms of getting to school. So that's, that's, that's a point. And I do want to thank, you know, the school system. I want to thank MTA and DOT for working together, trying to be collaborative. We know it's, it's, it's a multi-pronged issue, but glad to see us working together. But my primary kudos really go to the students. I say this as an educator, as a father, it's really good hearing these young people use their voice and to talk about what they're dealing with on a daily basis. I think a lot was removed by the fact that there's some young people that talk about not being able to take advantage of after-school activities and enrichment programs. We definitely don't want to see that. And so also thinking about young people getting to school on time and how important it is for them to be there at the beginning of the day. So again, we think about our, our safety issues in, in our city on those transit routes. So young people, I'm just glad to have your voices here. We really appreciate you giving witness to some of the things that not only you, but some of your classmates are dealing with. So with that, I'll get off. But again, I thank everyone for their time tonight. Very important issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm gonna go back to Councilwoman Porter. If she's not on the call, I'm gonna go to Councilman Glover from the thirteenth district. Councilwoman Porter? She's gone, okay. Councilman Glover? Any questions? I'm sorry, what did you say? No questions?
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Okay, I'm not finished with Councilwoman Glover yet.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Yep.
I was, I couldn't hear him, that's why I asked him.
I apologize. I was saying that I have, I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Odette Ramos? No question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Um, uh, I'm also very moved by the student's testimony. Uh, we did get all of the testimony in writing and I read through all of it and um. You know, it's uh disturbing that I think a lot of our, you know, obviously our students dealing with sexual harassment, our students who are late. And they don't want to be late. Um, and so I have some questions for Administrator Arnold and then a question for the school system. Administrator, you mentioned that there's a federal law that says that the MTA cannot. What, what, that if I understood correctly, the MTA cannot do a separate service for school. Is that correct? Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, that's correct. It is in the Code of uh Federal Regulations, uh and specifically talking about charter service. And so when you receive federal funds, um, you you can't limit who's using the service. So you know, particularly, it says, uh, to quote, you know, no recipient or operator shall engage in school bus operations using. Buses paid for by the Federal Transit Administration.
So, but your funding isn't fully federal funding?
So it doesn't matter. Uh, it's one of those things, you receive a dollar of federal funds and everything is considered federal and needs to abide by those regulations.
Oh, really?
Yes. Uh, there's a lot of times when it would be nice to have that flexibility, but unfortunately we don't.
Okay. Um, that's interesting. I didn't know that. Okay, thank you for that um clarity. And then I'm just looking at my notes here. The data that the school system asked for, Dr. Washington had asked for more data about. Uh, from the MTA to help determine the bell times. So it seems to me if. That the, the data is important, but if you don't have a system that. If students are being passed by, then that data is not being collected by the, this is a new field for me, so you'll have to excuse me. So um, you know, it's not being collected properly if we're not actually picking up the young people. So can you talk a little bit about that data collection piece? And you mentioned also that you're getting a new system, so maybe some of that data would be there?
Yeah, so we we do collect a lot of data. We have uh what's called automatic passenger counters, so. Uh, we can see when people are getting on and off the buses, uh which is one way that we we do look at um. School service. Uh, we also take a look at the S pass usage, and so the students who are using that S pass, we're able to look at that. Uh, in terms of pass-ups, uh our operators are supposed to, uh, there's a button that they can push when they're passing someone up. And so we do regularly take a look at at pass-ups and uh when we're doing our service planning, you know, if if buses are overly crowded in those areas. And we can add additional service in our next service change. So I've asked our team to take a look at the specific areas that have been mentioned today. We, I receive a, you know, a daily report uh from our our call center in terms of the things that they're hearing and if pass-ups are a big. Uh, issue, we take a look at that as well. Again, digging into those specific areas where we're seeing that from.
Are your operators actually using the button when they pass somebody? I mean, that's part of the issue is if they're not doing it.
Right, so this is where it's helpful whenever we have people call into the call center or hear it, you know, like we're hearing tonight. So we are gonna check uh the data and see if the operators are doing it. And then we have what's called our field supervisors. Uh, so our folks who are kind of out on the ground ensuring uh what's happening. And so we're gonna do some kind of field checks. Uh, again, on these specific areas. It's something we do regularly. If we're hearing about pass-ups, we'll send out, we'll check the data and also send out supervisors to ensure that. Our operators are doing what they're supposed to.
Um, thank you. And then I have one question for the school system, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, Dr. Washington, uh, we noticed today. That uh, you know, information was put out for each school as to what buses come near the school. And that's important as people are thinking about school choice. Because parents are making choices based on academics and everything else, and of course, how to get to the school. It was brought to my attention that some of that data is incorrect. Um, and so uh I wonder what's the best way to get to you the right um information so that that all can be corrected?
And so that data was probably um cut out by our. Uh, communications team and if you can. You can reach out to me and I can get the data, the correct information to the team. Um, and we can find the um. The source of that data that they are using.
Okay, because I think it's been, you know, extremely important for them to to have the right information. And then there were some things that you were interested in getting from the MTA and and we can talk offline, maybe have separate meetings about some of the other things that we can work on together. Because I think there's a lot of information here that I'm learning, so I need to process it a bit and then get back to you all. But I. I do appreciate both of you being on today. Um, and thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos, is that a request for the data?
Well, I, it's a follow-up that I have to make to to the um, to Dr. Washington.
No, I'm saying that you want to make it a request for Margarita so we can get the information.
The, oh, sure. Yes, I can make that a request to get the the proper data about the school um, uh bus routes. That, uh, so that everybody has the right information. Yep.
Okay, I I just have a question for Administrator, Administrator Arnold. I see you put in the chat with four one oh five three nine five thousand, but I was really concerned about the young. Lady saying that people stop trying to get her in a car. That's, that's real dangerous and scary. Is there any way that the MTA can create a hotline in terms of instead of dial, dialing that four one oh five three nine. Number and create a hotline, because if you got students and somebody following them, I think a hotline is more successful, more. Attainable for that to go in while it's happening instead of dialing that four one oh. Other number that you gave us. Is that a, is any way y'all can have a hotline in terms of just what that conversation was with about the young ladies? People following her, that's, that's real dangerous.
So I mean, absolutely, anytime someone feels they're in danger, I, they should call nine one one. We uh coordinate with the Baltimore City Police, and so if MTA police need to be deployed, they will be deployed from nine one one. Actually, Acting Chief Howard is on the line. Chief, can you talk a little bit about MTA police and and how we do coordinate with the city police and respond?
Yes, ma'am, you're absolutely correct. As far as uh when they're on the city street, that belongs on city street or whatever local jurisdiction that is. Uh, that belongs to the city street and like you indicated, that you call nine one one. What happens is if they get on our service and they're leaving our service or there's some issues, we will coordinate with Baltimore City or County, wherever it is. For this uh, for this uh, this deal that will be Baltimore City. And uh we'll try to get something together so that we can work that area until it's cleared. But once again. If they uh on the city street that belongs to Baltimore City and it should call nine one one.
My question is, could there be an alternative? Because in Baltimore, in some districts, they might have thirteen police. They might be on a call that's, you know, I'm not saying that young lady, that's not important. But if you got a shooting going on, it's mostly unlikely that it's not gonna be a prod in a police department. So I'm asking, is there any way? And coordinate some way with with um, with the school police or. Because again, we got a lot of issues outside, inside of Baltimore and. Some police districts have twelve police cars throughout the whole district. So I mean, it's maybe a bigger conversation to have, but I'm glad you. Shared that information with us. Thank you.
And 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 you're absolutely correct that the Baltimore City may have a limited amount of officers. And also like they add that we too have a limited amount. We only have a hundred officer, patrol officers for the entire state of Maryland. That includes Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and around the county more. So I have even less. However, if any student has an issue on the city street, once again, it should dial nine one one. If there's any, any issues that is on our system, they can dial uh four one zero. Four five four seven seven two one or two zero, which will go over directly into our dispatch. We will respond to our system. Uh, we will coordinate with any local jurisdiction around our system. And uh we also work around with Baltimore City School Police where we deal directly with Chief Ham as well as his Deputy Chief uh, uh Major Coleman.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to to add, uh, you know, in regards to to sexual harassment on our our buses, I think that came up earlier. You know, that's absolutely unacceptable. It's something that shouldn't be happening and I hate hearing that. So we are are looking at uh different transit systems around the country and campaigns that they've done around sexual harassment. To encourage people to, to let them know like what they can do if they're experiencing it. And so. Uh, in this coming year, we we'd like to roll something out. And so, you know, we're looking at BART, at WADA, some of the different agencies and things that they've done. So we can learn from our peers. Uh, and so, so you will see something on that in the coming year.
Mr. Chair, can I just follow up on that real quick? Um, so is it a campaign about what to do or making sure that people know, hey, you can't? You can't talk to a young person and be, you know, like, what kind of campaign are you talking about?
So I think both, right? So reminding folks like, hey, you you can't and shouldn't act like that. I think just a general code of conduct of how to act on a bus. Uh, across the board. Uh, and then also if it is happening, uh, for especially for young women, so that they can know what they can do. So we're still in the process of developing it. I I wish I had something to share now, um, but we will be in twenty twenty-two rolling something up.
And one more follow-up question to Administrator Arnold. If that student says somebody following them, can they actually get on a bus? Can they give that information to the bus driver? I know they got a tough job already. But if, once they get on a bus, then they're responsible to the MTA. If they knew their car was following, can they give that information to the bus driver? So they will be aware of, maybe had to call school police, MTA police and say a car was following them. I mean.
Yeah, they can absolutely reach out to the the bus operator. Um, you know, they can call our OCC who will coordinate with the uh MTA police. You can use the, they can also use the number that, um, which we'll drop that in the chat too, uh, that Chief Howard mentioned previously and just call MTA police directly if they'd like.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna go back to public testimony. Uh, we did read about the raise hand function, so Ms. Curran is here.
Hi, um, I just want to confirm, I'm Meredith Shaw. It's my turn to go. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume so and I'm gonna get started. Thank you to the City Council for hosting tonight's event. And creating space for these critical conversations about our city's transit system and its impact on educational opportunity. Thank you also to the students here tonight for using your voices to uplift necessary change. My name is Meredith Shaw and I am a member of Baltimoreans for Educational Equity, or B. B is a group of teachers, former teachers, families, students, and allies who work collectively to achieve educational equity. At the district, city, and state level. I'm a former teacher and I currently serve as an educational associate at Henderson Hopkins, an elementary middle school in East Baltimore. While many of our families come from East Baltimore, as a contract school, we have students attending from all over the city. I am also a daily MTA user and I rely on the bus system to travel between my school and my home every day. I'm here tonight to share some insight on the intersection of the education and public transit systems in Baltimore. These stories exemplify ways that public transit impacts school communities across the city. Our membership has three major areas of concern that require immediate action from legislators and the MTA. School communities deserve to see tangible improvements in the safety, reliability, and efficiency of public transit. Ensuring safe routes to school should be the foundation of a school choice system like Baltimore's. As you've already heard from the students and family members who've testified before me, students largely feel unsafe on their way to and from school. Especially when they have to travel early in the morning or after dark. As the after-school program coordinator at my school, I know students who cannot participate in enriching opportunities. Simply because they do not feel safe when catching a later bus or feel the bus schedule gets more unreliable in the evening. I think of a student who, as much as he loves to run, does not participate on the track team because he doesn't want to risk taking a later bus. With his skill and perseverance, running is an activity that could open doors later in his academic career. High school or college scholarships, chances to travel to new places. Without the ability to practice after school, those opportunities may never come to be. Extracurricular activities help students feel more connected to their school community and also help them explore areas of interest. Our students deserve the time and space to find their joys and passions. A transit system that prioritizes student safety is an integral part of that. Adding more shelters and better lighting to stops would be a good first step to ensuring Baltimore students. Who make up one-fifth of MTA riders feel safe traveling to and from school at any time of day. The reliability of the MTA system directly impacts student learning time and consequently, student outcomes. You've already heard tonight how transit impacts student arrival times at school. I'm the attendance monitor at my school and I work with, to help families identify solutions to attendance barriers. Families consistently report that transportation is a barrier to school attendance. Whether tardy or absent, minutes of missed class time add up. In the short term, students' grades can suffer. In the long term, school attendance is a key indicator of grade-level reading and high school graduation. Not being able to get to school on time or at all can impact students' lives permanently. I think of a student who, because he often arrives tardy due to transportation issues, often misses his first period science class. Consequently, his science grade is significantly lower than his grades in other courses. As brilliant and hardworking as the student is, his composite score may be lower and his high school options more limited. Due to this transit system's impact on his grades. To help our students succeed, we should be doing everything within our power to make getting to and from school as easy as possible. To increase reliability, the MTA should run buses more frequently and improve the MTA transit app. Reliability is especially important when so many students rely on multiple bus routes to get to school. I know many of our students commute at least forty-five minutes, with some students spending between one and two hours in transit to or from school. When I previously lived in central Baltimore, I took the twenty-one bus riding east to get to school each day. While I was lucky enough to be able to get where I needed to on one route, there were many school families. That transferred onto the twenty-one bus from other lines throughout my commute. If the previous route was running late, they would miss the twenty-one connection and through no fault of their own, be late to school. When designed routes are inefficient, students miss more class time and start their day with anxiety and frustration. The MTA should take the needs of city schools, student, and family writers into account when developing all future bus routes. I sincerely hope that you will take swift and urgent action to address the concerns raised today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Madeline Munson.
Hello, thank you so much for having me here. I am a twelfth-grade English teacher at Coppin Academy in northwest Baltimore. And I live in the Highland Town neighborhood in southeast Baltimore. I want to echo what a lot of my colleagues here have said. My students rely on the bus to get to school. Um, and way too often, the bus just doesn't come, uh, or it doesn't come in time to get to school on time. Or it comes, but it doesn't stop because it's already too full. Obvious. Obviously. Uh, the uh, uh, this unreliability impacts my students' learning because they're not there. Or they're not in school for their second or third period class. I'm sorry, their first or second period class. I was talking to my first period class. About, you know, how these transit difficulties made them feel and they said. They know we don't really care about them. Because if we did, we'd get them buses to school on time. Um, and in fact, this morning, my first period class had three students in it. With the majority of uh of those students arriving during second period on the same couple of buses. Some of my best students actually don't have grades that reflect their abilities. Because they're not in class regularly and that impacts the amount of time that they spend. spend learning and the amount of time they spend practicing and the amount of time they spend completing work. And I'm also, like a lot of my colleagues here, I'm at work late and I see students an hour or two hours after our bell, still waiting for the bus, right? So, also because of our, the area where my school is, many of my students have to traverse Mandama Mall to get home and that's a space where students report harassment and threats pretty regularly. But, you know, I can't really hold absences or tardiness against these students because I know from experience what they, what they go through. I also ride the bus to school and for me, it takes a lot of time and energy just to make sure that I get to work and then get home on time. Like what my colleague, Ms. Cleopatra, said, you know, I don't worry too much about myself in this situation, but, but, you know, obviously, I'm much more concerned for my students. My reporting time at school is 8:05 and I leave my house about 6:00 in order to make sure I get to to work on time and ready. When I come home, I typically ride the subway to Johns Hopkins and then catch either the blue or the orange, which are CityLink and were ostensibly high-frequency routes. But those routes, you know, at 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM regularly show 45 or 50-minute headways. I have, I was gonna show you my, my picture from the Transit App from this Monday when I waited over an hour to catch a bus home. You know, that then impacts me because I have a three-and-a-half-year-old who I want to get home to, who has to get picked up from childcare. And obviously, spending that amount of time in transit also impacts my own work, you know, my time to be able to do my work as a teacher. So, you know, I love Baltimore and I love public transit and, and I often say that if I could do, you know, magic, wave a magic wand for the city, I would, what I would do first is give the city a functioning, reliable transit system. Because, you know, that's something that could truly transform the experience of so many of us who live here. But, you know, for me, obviously, kids and students are the most important. And, you know, I think one of the, one of the, you know, simplest, most obvious ways that we could show our Baltimore City School students that we care about them is by making sure they can get to school and home from school safely and on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call-in user number one, do you want to testify? You should have heard a beep for me to identify you. I'm gonna mute you and then unmute you again. Do you wish to testify? Call-in user number two, do you wish to testify? Mr. Chair, that concludes public testimony.
This concludes the public testimony. I want to thank everybody for attending the hearing before I close it out.
Mr. Chair, yeah, just, just to wrap it up, if you don't mind, I really appreciate everybody coming up.
Counsel, real quick, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that the committee received several written testimony, testimonies, copies were placed in the bill file. Counselwoman, you can proceed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for arranging this hearing this evening and thank you to everybody who participated. We heard a lot of information that I think a lot of us have to process and figure out what are the next steps. But we do know one thing is really, really clear. An efficient, effective bus system is really important for student success in so many different ways. So I'm really looking forward to continuing to work on this issue. We hadn't planned on voting this out tonight because there's more to do and we'll come back and I appreciate the chair taking on this issue with us as as we move forward. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair and colleagues.
Well, I want to thank everybody on this call, especially our young people and our parents and bringing this to our attention about some of the experience our students are having and we really don't know it until we have these kind of hearings to find out exactly what's happening out there when they're on a bus stop, when they're going to get back for school. I want to thank the Administrator Arnold, who just came aboard for her being on the call, but understanding how important it is when some of the parents or the students say the bus ride right past them, that means they might have to wait another 45 minutes to an hour. And when it gets dark, it's very dangerous for our young people. So thank you for that and thank for everybody who's on here. This hearing is in recess. Thank you and be safe.